is involved, but as soon as that is released, we will be following through on this request to the Attorney General. Dan, I'll turn it back to you.
So I believe the next slide is for Police Chief to discuss some of our protocols related to mental health calls.
So one clarification from Terry's report. The participating agencies thus far in our endeavor to create a regional approach, which does still cause police officers to respond are right now the Martinez Police Department and the Pleasant Hill Police Department. I will be approaching the Concord Police Chief on this very topic. We have met with the Crisis Response Team. We've asked them to come in, meet with some of our managers, and help us learn about the program as a resource, but also put us in position to provide information about the Mobile Crisis Response Team to families that could take advantage of that system. We did receive that training and have begun to get the word out to our staff. Lieutenant Reese, can you comment on to what further we've done in terms of training or providing that information to our officers?
Yes, Chief, thank you. So unfortunately, we had training scheduled for our entire organization to get to meet with county mental health. And due to COVID, the training was canceled. So we are now looking to reschedule that training for August or September.
Okay, so we do still intend on making the material available for officers to provide. We do want more in-depth training from them. And one of the things we learned from our meeting was that that's also a resource for our officers if they encounter a family that and that might be a good fit for that resource that we can share it. We did several years ago now dedicate money for frontline law enforcement funding through the Community Corrections Partnership. Recall that stemmed from AB 109 and the transfer of funds for community-led probation and supervision of people rather than incarceration. And that funds the regional, the County Chiefs Group decided to create a series of Mental Health Evaluation Team Officers. We currently host the Central County Officer. His name is James Davis, and he is available to try to work with families, to connect them to resources, though he does not necessarily respond to active calls for service. He will follow up from referrals from our department and from the other agencies in the Central County. We've also, the section or the initiative that I referenced earlier, which is the proposed collaboration with Pleasant Hill, with Martinez. The idea is that each department would have a handful of police officers that were trained above and beyond the training that Lieutenant Reese mentioned earlier, and that we would strive to work together so that if there was a call that required or caused somebody to have additional training to be present, the idea would be that somebody from Pleasant Hill or Martinez could respond to our calls, and we would also respond to theirs when practical. So that is something that we have discussed conceptually. The plan is to get our leadership teams together to get into the detail work, identify a steering committee or advisory board, and share this with the community so that we can get input on how could we add value when we do have to respond to calls for service involving an individual in mental health crisis. So we are continuing to examine that regional approach, and we'll have more on that in the future. Next slide.
Yeah, so the last topic that we have as part of the staff presentation this evening is your counsel had asked to bring back options for if the council were interested in creating some type of a diversity and inclusion advisory group. I won't run through this in detail, but there are various ways to structure such an effort. And if your counsel, after discussing, would like to give us direction to move forward, we could present more information at a future council meeting with more details. But wanted to follow up again to council's request that there are multiple ways to structure this type of an effort. And with that, we are done with the slide portion of this evening's presentation, and we're all available to answer questions.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you to staff for the presentation. I'm going to try to do this in the sequence that the, this is presented. So Tracy, you're going to be up first. Thank you for summarizing and comparing the eight can't wait with state law and our current policy. Is it feasible to actually line up current policy on a which policy it is and which page? And so people could cross-reference the specifics and then also to cross-reference the statute, those portions of the statute at the state level so that we can understand or the community could?
Certainly, I will work to put all of our policies on our webpage to direct people to, as well as the statutes.
There's, I would assume, a lot of pages of policy that... Is there a navigational tool that could be created that would say, for this one, go to this, this, and this?
Yes, I will work on that, yes.
And have you, the Advisory Committee for the Chief has been mentioned a couple of times. Is this something the Advisory Committee is planning to look at with you all to just kind of get a sense of what this is? What our use of policy and all of that? Can we do that, Chief?
Absolutely. That was actually already contemplated.
That's what I thought.
Progress. We've met one time in person. I believe that was February. We ended up canceling our March meeting as we were all bonding to the new normal with the shelter in place. We were able, however, to meet in April and May via Zoom. And I had also shared our use of force policy. And then again, our, you know, we've had to respond to other issues. They have really provided, I would say, exceptional guidance and served as a fantastic sounding board. We have worked through them to identify what we believe are the most pressing issues. Use of force among them, transparency, accountability, mental health response. We're going to have a robust set of meaty topics to get into over the coming months.
So most of the eight can't wait appears to be significantly about use of force. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's the intent of the campaign to lower the use of force incidents with law enforcement.
And how long has this campaign been? This is nationally, it's?
It is nationally. And the first time I heard about it was, I don't know, June 4th or 5th. So I think it came out shortly after the George Floyd murder. I'm not sure if anybody else can speak to the exact date, but I think it was at the beginning of June.
And so, thank you on, thank you on that. My next set of questions, maybe Dan or Terry. So is it, it's probably, I've been trying to think what week, I was trying to calculate what week of the shelter-in-place, stay-at-home, don't-go-out, and wear-a-mask have been, I think we're in week 14. So it feels like, so really, we've been almost at a virtual shutdown in terms of making progress on many of the things that we were underway with the FOSAF group for almost four months. Is that? I know it's frustrating.
Yeah, shelter-in-place orders, you know, the actual order took effect on March 17th. So yeah, we're three months in. You know, not everything has been shut down, but it's certainly anything that requires public activity has been, you know, put on hold, if you will, or was paused. And obviously, I think we are all hoping that the shelter-in-place orders wouldn't have lasted this long, and we'd be in a better state from a public health perspective than what we are, and we could have resumed this sooner. But obviously, that's not been the case. So it has been made, you know, made meeting more difficult, obviously, and we've met with the FOSAF team. It's through, it's online through Zoom or some other type of platform, which makes things a little more challenging. And then obviously, we're not going to convene large groups of people, and at least in person, in any type of a forum to discuss these issues. So as Terry had noted previously, we're revisiting, given the timeline, before we'd likely be able to host large groups in a safe manner in which we could have in-person discussion to look to see what can be done remotely and if that would still be effective.
So tonight, and Dan, don't go away, please. Tonight, we heard again, we didn't hear about the Cohoots, which is Eugene, Oregon, but we did hear about what we read about in the paper, probably yesterday, that Alameda County is collaborating with three cities in Alameda. And boy, I think of Oakland, San Leandro, and I can't remember the third city. But in terms of a mobile crisis response team, it sounds like Contra Costa already has that in place, but just hasn't been utilizing it or making it available as well. I'm kind of confused by why we haven't known about it. And I know we, this came up a few before we went into the shutdown, but can you elaborate again?
Yeah, the county's Mobile Crisis Response Team, I believe, has been around for about two years, give or take. It was started, I think, as more of a pilot program. It is one team for all the county. It's not specific to any one region. So it's a resource that's available for the unincorporated areas that are under the County Board of Supervisors and the County Sheriff jurisdiction. And it is also available for any crises that occur within the incorporated areas within the city limits. It's my understanding in meeting with the health folks at the county that it's been underutilized, and they would like to see it better utilized, also acknowledging it is not 24/7. It is in effect six days a week, I believe, and about 10 or 12 hours a day. I don't have the website right in front of me, but it's not 24/7. We had had ongoing discussions with them. They were very receptive to partnering more with cities. We were looking to put together a pilot for central Contra Costa cities and the county to further flesh out this program. And in fact, I had invited the, someone from the County Administrator's Office, the Anna Roth, who is the Health Director for the county, as well as Dr. Suzanne Tobano, who is the Behavioral Health Director, oversees mental health in addition to drug and alcohol and other types of services, to come meet with all the city managers, all 19 of us that work within Contra Costa County. Unfortunately, that meeting was scheduled for March 12th. And instead of being able to discuss how we are going to move forward and make this more front and center program that would be more available, we discussed all the sheltering-in-place requirements related to COVID-19 that took place shortly thereafter. I have recently resumed my discussions with the county, given that COVID-19 has been a high priority for everybody, and I assume we'll have further dialogue before too long. I do want to expand upon the challenge that I see related to some of these requests. You know, I'm going to go beyond the immediate scope of your question here, council member, in that, you know, there's obviously where a lot of comments tonight about defunding police. And even if we set aside the argument of defunding police, a lot of discussion about funding additional non-PD responses to certain types of situations. And the way things are structured in California, that really should be done at a statewide level and at a regional level so that we can all work collectively. The way California is structured is that social service programs, like many of the ones that folks are calling for, are provided by counties. The State of California sets directives, sets clear policy, and actually creates mandates for counties that then receive funding to carry out these social programs on behalf of residents and individuals who live both within the city limits and outside of city limits. The vast majority, I don't know the exact number, but I would venture at least 95% or more of cities do not provide any type of social service program because they partner with the county, which is what you had asked about in Alameda County and what we're attempting to do here. So realistically, if there were to be a major effort to have less PD response to issues and to have more of a non-PD response, it really should start at the state, updating its mandates for how these programs and policies should be structured, update the funding streams that then would flow to counties. And if there were a desire to have cities more actively involved, then that could be a policy change that would be done consistently at a minimum throughout the region, if not throughout the entire state. While I understand there's a lot of interest for the cities just to jump in and do this, and certainly there may be some that do in some areas where that makes sense. The challenge is that most cities have never run these types of programs, we're not expert in these programs. And then there are also jurisdictional matters with the types of programs and services that the county provides that the city simply does not have jurisdiction to even provide some types of those services. So that's a long answer to your question. I acknowledge that. But I wanted to give you the fuller scope of how these partnerships work and how policy programs are structured in the State of California, which is different in other parts of the country and other states. Some cities are vested with this authority and responsibility. Others, the state provides it directly, and the counties or cities don't provide it. So there's not one uniform approach. And that's something that's really important as folks are evaluating models in other states, that state laws and policy is structured differently in different parts of the country.
So to try to summarize. You've been working with the county and all of the city managers. There are 19 cities in Contra Costa. You are one of them. One of the city managers of those cities. So you have been, you had initiated the work early in 2019 to actually bring the Crisis Intervention Group, the Mobile Crisis Intervention Group, to talk with the city managers about how to create a more robust program and the opportunities to really utilize the services better?
Correct.
Then there were just a little bit of change of focus. What is it going to take to get it back to the table? And how can we get a presentation on it even here at City Council so we can hear about it as City Council members?
Yeah, that's a part of discussion we can have with the county here quickly. I've already initiated some of that discussion, but we can work on getting a formal update to council or to others.
And then the other part of the summary is that in the State of California, the authority to, when you use the word jurisdiction, you're not being, meaning geographic jurisdiction, you're meaning legal authority to deliver certain services? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, that, in a lot of the comments we heard, there have not been very many specific comments that have been made about what types of responses might be provided by social service workers and who they would work for, who would provide that. But let me give you an example that comes to mind for me is that counties have responsibility for child abuse and elder abuse activities. Obviously, if there's some type of a domestic violence issue that is immediately occurring, the PD are involved or the sheriff's department's involved. But also then adult protective services or child protective services gets involved in the event there's foster care. So to the extent there were some mental health issues involved in those types of matters, even if we wanted to get involved in the foster care or child protective services line of work, that responsibility solely rests with the county at this point in time. And we do not have jurisdiction in those matters, with the exception of our PD, obviously, providing first responder type of, and law enforcement response. And there are several other types of examples along those lines, but that's just one that comes to mind at the moment.
And we currently have a good partnership with the county to provide services to the homeless through our intervention teams that we help to fund. So we could be, could that serve as a model for what we might want to do here?
It certainly could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff, for a very comprehensive report on the community listening session, community listening and dialogue sessions. My understanding is that was intended to be a series of smaller to medium sessions, six to 10 of those, followed by one larger community session. And that we have the RFQ, the Request for Proposals for a Facilitator, it, facilitator went out in January. We received seven responses about that by the end of February, and then things stalled out based on COVID. So now we're resuming the process. There's going to be a meeting with the FOSAF group next Tuesday to discuss, to rate the seven responses. So is the idea that we'll have a facilitator onboard? We'll have selected the facilitator after consulting with FOSAF by the end of the month?
That's the goal. Part of the question mark here will be if there's agreements on who the facilitator is. If there is, we can obviously move more quickly than if we don't agree. And then some of our time will be spent, as I mentioned, bringing, bringing in the new committee members and seeing if they had different ideas that we need to blend into the mix. But short answer, yes, the goal, we should be able to select a facilitator by end of the month.
And then what's the scheduling and sequencing of those small to medium sessions going forward? They all relate to different topics, mental illness or implicit bias and so on. And so what's it, what's the vision? What did we put out in the RFQ in terms of the scheduling for that?
We actually just asked for assistance in, one, providing us guidance on if, is that the right way to do this? Obviously, the, this is an area of deep expertise for these consultants, whereas we're a little new to this. And so the first question for them is, this is what we've dreamed of. Is that really what you recommend? And then from there, how quickly can we pull something together? And so we don't have answers to that yet until we speak with the selected consultant.
That's helpful. So then even once the facilitator's onboard, we have to kind of reality check our assumptions on how this is going to work out with the selected facilitator. They're going to need a little bit of time to ramp up, but not a ton of time. And you're envisioning that within three to four weeks from them being selected. The first session could be scheduled. And at that, after they're selected even, there could be developed a schedule of the event of the, of the small to medium meetings throughout. I'm imagining it's going to take a couple-month process at least. But there'll be some more certainty than we have right now in terms of what the schedule is, once that facilitator's onboard.
Yes. And then I would just add into your schedule a week or so, or two of contracting time to get through all of that legal stuff. But yes, as soon as we know who the consultant is, we can really start to deep dive more into what would a schedule look like? What's the structure look like? And what I neglected to mention earlier is that our hope is that there's also a good fit that this consultant, many of them also provide training in this space. And so hopefully, if we find a match, this consultant could also be, quickly roll into helping us with our training program and scoping out what that might look like in these areas as well.
Thank you. And then in terms of the training related to diversity and inclusion and implicit bias, I know the staff report addresses that that will, they'll be funding for that in the fiscal year 21 budget, which we are still going through the process on that. And we'll see, you know, that's a commitment in the staff report that they'll be funding for that. What is the reasonable expectation in terms of the training for that? It'll, what employees will it cover? Will it just cover the police department? Are we talking about all city employees, maybe the city manager? What do we envision happening there?
Yeah, so I want to clarify that this was something that we were proposing as part of the upcoming budget well before the death of George Floyd. And some of these discussions, we had entered some money preliminarily into the budget going as far back as January as we began prepping for this. What we are envisioning is, obviously, our police department already has some training in these areas. We have provided some of our non-PD staff training in some of these areas over the last couple of years as well. But we want to have a more holistic training plan that would cover all city employees. We have roughly from round figures, 370 regular employees. We do have a couple hundred temporary employees, part-time, that equates to about another 50 full-time folks, if you will, if you add up all the hours. So right now, what I plan to share with your council and everybody who have a first look at the Finance Committee meeting next Monday is $400,000 for this effort. It would include training. It would also potentially include the cost of some of these listening sessions or some other ideas that may come about here relatively soon or in the next several weeks as we work through a number of these issues. The way that was derived, just to give you some context, is that if we estimate around 400 employees, that'd be about $1,000 per employee. It's a starting point. I don't know if that, how that number will actually compare. We may not spend a full thousand on all employees, but we would have money for some of these other initiatives. And I do want to point out that we are looking at having to cut $12 million out of our budget, out of our general fund budget, and yet we are still recommending a $400,000 increase in this area. So this is obviously a very high priority. It was a high priority going back several months, and it's even a higher priority now. I've received some questions over the last month or two from FOSAF and others. What exactly is the training plan? Exactly do we intend to do? And candidly, we had intended to have that all fleshed out by now, but we had to divert a lot of our attention to COVID-19. So we have the $400,000 proposed in the budget, and we will be working through those very details about what training will be provided, who will provide it, and who will obviously receive it.
What about when? When reminds you training, you know, for?
Well, assuming the money is adopted in the budget, which would begin July 1st, we would begin working on efforts thereafter in order to identify a plan and pull together folks. But it would certainly be done in the coming fiscal year. The sooner the better. But there are a lot of issues still to work through.
And what, I agree, the sooner the better. And then what's the next step in terms of the Mobile Crisis Response Team? I appreciated Councilmember Silva's questions in that regard, but I don't have a clear understanding. Is, is the county going to make a presentation to us, the facilitator of that program? Or what is that next step, and when will that happen?
Well, we can certainly request that they make a request to make a presentation to the City Council. So I will do, make that outreach and make that request here soon to come to council when they're available to do so. In addition, we are continuing the discussion about how to raise the profile of this program in order to make it more beneficial, and at the same time, ideally, how to expand it. You know, one of the discussions that will be challenging, when I already reached out to the county about this program, they made it very clear that they have a couple hundred million dollar budget gap to close. In addition, they receive most of their funding for these types of programs from the state, which, as we all know, has a $54 billion budget to close. So money is going to be a very real issue, and as we know, we have a $12 million budget to close. So those are some of the practical issues, but from more of a, how do we go next? The discussions, I think, need to occur about how do we make the most of this program and what options exist to better utilize it.
I agree. And I just wanted to follow this last point on the days of operation. I think you had said six days a week. Based on their website, they actually operate seven days a week. It's not 24 hours, but it's Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 10:30 PM, and Saturday and Sunday, 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. That was all my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Woodell, do you have any questions?
I do, but I'm interested to be hearing from the public person.
Okay, well, good. I do not have any questions. So I do understand that FOSSAF has a representative who will be making the report for the entire group. That person is Barbara Pennington and has, can we find her on the list and bring her forward first? Barbara's going to have 10 minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I unmuted before you asked me to do that.
And I learned patience, so we're a good team.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Barbara Pennington, and I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. And I'm speaking and making a presentation tonight on behalf of Princess Scott, Alexis and Ton Hall, FOSSAF. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. FOSSAF's goal is to make changes to how Walnut Creek responds to a person experiencing a mental health crisis and to enable equitable outcomes for Black, Indigenous, and people of color. No family in Walnut Creek should have to experience the tragedy of losing a loved one when they call our city for help. Tonight, you heard from city staff about the status of the requests made by FOSSAF. We thought it would be important to you hear also directly from FOSSAF about our five requests. Our first request, a 24/7 non-police, non-violence response to mental health crisis calls. Status after one year, no change. We're requesting a non-police response to mental health crisis calls. Chief Chaplin is exploring a police-led response team with Martinez and Pleasant Hill. We realize that the county has the expertise to deal with the mental health crisis. And we agree, certainly agree with Mr. Buckshai, that it's complicated, and there are several agencies involved. We know the city has met with the county about the mental health services that it provides. But we have not seen leadership from our city exploring how county resources or other models could be modified to better meet the needs of our Walnut Creek families to create a non-police response. I can't tell you how much we appreciate Councilwoman Silva's request to ask for the county to come to present to the city council about what services they provide. Thank you. Our second request, adoption of restrictive use of force policy for the Walnut Creek Police Department. Status after one year, policy change to forbid arid controls. As our elected officials, this is your most important responsibility to ensure your policies do not bring harm to your citizens. We urge you not to shift this responsibility to your police department, city manager, and/or their respective staff. Please lead this yourselves. As Walnut Creek's elected leaders, you have a professional and personal obligation to study these issues and formulate your own opinions. Mayors and city councils nationwide, in large cities and small towns, are pledging to review their police use of force policies, engage their communities in that review, report their findings, and seek feedback, and then reform police use of force policies. In the letter that we sent you today, there was a link to the website with information on Making the Pledge. I'm sure you all know all about it. It's from Obama.org. Please take the time to consider joining other cities in making the change. In case you're not aware, up to last week, Walnut Creek had met two of the eight can't wait criteria, according to Campaign Zero, which, by the way, was started after Ferguson, Missouri, Missouri incident. So I believe that was in 2014. I think Campaign Zero started in 2015. That's a data-driven nonprofit that analyzes use of force policies for police departments across the country. So now that the police department has banned parroted controls, three of the eight can't wait criteria are met. And the eight can't wait criteria is just a start. It's not a be-all, end-all to use of force policies. In the letter we sent you, you received earlier today, I put a link in there to a model use of force policy, which is based on existing policies for police departments across the country. Our third request, evidence-based anti-bias diversity crisis intervention and de-escalation training for the Walnut Creek Police Department. The anti-bias and diversity training status after one year, not implemented, but we feel that's due to COVID-19. The crisis intervention and de-escalation training status after one year, additional less lethal weapons purchased, no policy change. Anti-bias and diversity training is an area where there has been support and movement by the city. The city worked closely with FOSSAF to plan this training for the police department as well as city staff. We feel confident that had COVID-19 not intervened, the implementation of anti-bias and diversity training would have been well underway. The pressure for crisis intervention and de-escalation training for the Walnut Creek Police Department has frankly been hampered by lack of FOSSAF resources. The police department made its training schedule and history available to FOSSAF. And at FOSSAF's request, the police department purchased additional less lethal weapons and conducted or is in the process of conducting training in the use of these weapons. Excuse me. However, to our knowledge, no policy changes have been made. And we're not aware of any information on the duration of the pilot for the Bola wraps or a timeline for implementation. Our fourth request, officers who shot Miles Hall should be placed on desk duty until the completion of the Walnut Creek Police Department and District Attorney's investigations, as the chief of police indicated in his statement of June 2, 2019. Status after one year, no change. This request, although reasonable, has been met with strong resistance by city staff, so much so that at one point, FOSSAF was asked to adhere to ground rules requiring no mention of it and was ordered to ban FOSSAF meeting attendees who did raise the issue. More than any other request, this issue has jeopardized the community's trust with city council and city leadership. The police department has presented a proposed policy to the Community Advisory Board for comment that has not returned with a revised version. Our fifth request, an independent investigation of the June 2, 2019 killing of Miles Hall. Status after one year, no change. FOSSAF is asking for an independent investigation. City staff wants an independent review by the Attorney General's Office. A review and an investigation are not the same thing. A review consists of ensuring that the process of the investigation was conducted according to established protocols. An investigation involves collecting information and evidence to determine whether a crime has been committed. One year. As Mr. Buckshai said, one, many, many meetings, lots of conversations. One year of many meetings with city staff and hundreds of public comments at city council meetings with very little change. The frustration you hear during public comment reflects our disappointment in the lack of leadership and the lack of acknowledgement of the need for change. We feel that the success of the diversity and anti-bias training request is the result of city staff dedicated to the effort who felt passionate about making this happen. Is there a genuine desire to change from within the organization instead of a defensive response to pressure from the outside? At the June 9, 2020 city council meeting, Councilmember Wilk asked city staff to report back on what would change if a similar incident happened in the next month, just so we can ensure that this won't happen again. Those are his words. We did not see a response to his request for this information and the materials provided with the agenda, so we were looking forward to city staff's verbal update on his request at this meeting. Since it was not provided, we are relying on all of you to ask the question again and again and again until it is answered. What would change if a similar incident happened in the next month? Just so we can ensure that this won't happen again. Once again, on behalf of FOSSAF, thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Next speaker, please.
Owen.
Okay. Would you check Owen to see if your mute is still on? Thank you.
I beg your pardon. Thank you. I wanted to tell you, first of all, just by way of introduction, I'm Owen Smith, retired airline pilot. I've raised a couple of kids here. And I decided to go on my bicycle and just kind of record what happened on Sunday. And I want to focus my comments on the use of force that occurred on Highway 680. Because although I did not see the shooting, I, I became aware of it later and reviewed many videos. My own impression, I did visit the area briefly, but, but left when the, when the police said to leave. I did see tear gas being deployed behind protesters, actually driving them onto the freeway by accident, I assume. And there's a couple of things that just bothered the heck out of me because what I want to say to you guys is you swore to serve and protect us, and then you shot our kids. You get that? Now, you may feel like you're just doing your duty, but what is so important about an incursion on a freeway? It's a misdemeanor, near as I can tell from the highway code, punishable by a fine, unless there are some other elements of the code that I'm unaware of in Walnut Creek, and that may be true. I'm, I'm not, not a lawyer. But the use of force in that particular situation involved what they call kinetic impact projectiles. I happened to make the acquaintance of a 24-year-old, 24-year-old girl that was shot through, through next door, who was shot in the head by one of the deputies on the freeway. Now, I'm not saying it was a Walnut Creek deputy, but I'm saying it was on your turf, Mr. Chaplin. And if you, you guys called the CHP. So
Mr. Smith, can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, who set the game rules? I'm not, you know, I may not be the Democrat, the demographic you're expecting to hear from. But in, in my view, the oversight of the police department has been sadly lacking. We have a police captain telling you what he's going to release.
Sir, I asked you to wrap it up. Would you please stop now?
All right. So that's, that, I've said my piece. Anyway.
Eli?
Hello. So I wanted to address something that Captain Hill said about the principles of crowd control and what is attempting to be preserved within the use of crowd control. And he made the point that there is no priority in which the police prioritize property or life. But in his semantics regarding what qualifies as a violent act, it seems to me that he finds an attack on property, say, looting or the destruction of a highway to be violent and the use of tear gas to be non-lethal. And to me, that seems to be an important distinction because what it says is that property is more valuable than life, that the destruction of property is an act more violent than one which poses a threat to life. And with that said, it also suggests that there's something inherently juxtaposed in this view of value held by clearly the police department, and it seems to me also by many of the council members via this meeting, which is juxtaposed to the view held by their constituents who go to the Mint Office. And I think we can see that one of the central demands that has been highlighted by constituents in this meeting that of defunding the police and re-appropriating the funds to community safety initiatives and more community-centered activities has been systematically just about, not mentioned once in the past four hours, which public comments were essentially not permitted. So I'd like to ask a direct question to all of the council members, to which I would like a yes or undecided answer. If that answer can't be given now, I will be touching each of you individually until I can get an answer. If you're, if the voting majority of your constituents were to support the defunding of the police department with the re-appropriation of those funds, towards community-centered safety initiatives and activities, again, the voting majority of your constituents supporting this initiative, defunding the police, re-appropriating the funds, would you accept those terms? I'd like an answer of yes, no, undecided. If you can answer directly now, I would appreciate it.
I, I know you would, but we don't generally respond to those questions. Your time is up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Isabella?
Are you talking? Which end are you?
Is this any better?
Yeah, a lot.
Good. Plug my headphones. So I'm going back a little bit into the presentation, but I wanted to dispute the classification of tear gas as a non-lethal weapon. There have been several instances where the use of tear gas has resulted in death, especially for citizens with respiratory issues. I also want to bring up the point, which the police chief and captain and lieutenant did not mention, which is that we are in the middle of a respiratory panic, a pandemic. And COVID-19 is a virus easily spread by coughing, which is a nearly universal effect of tear gas. So when the Walnut Creek Police Department uses tear gas against protesters, and I don't think it's really relevant whether it's peaceful or not, they are absolutely contributing to the spread of COVID-19, which I would argue can result in the death of community members. And this absolutely should be considered a violent offense, and I would argue lethal. I also wanted to address the eight can't wait and bring to the council's attention the extremely flexible language used in these policies. So many times an exception is made based on what an officer perceives, infers, or believes, which pretty much eliminates any real accountability because a police officer can simply say that they believe that use of force was necessary, and that exempts them from being held accountable to any of the policies outlined in the Eight Can't Wait campaign. So as you move forward and consider that, I would also encourage you to look with a critical eye on the language used and how that can be manipulated by people in power, including police officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Keep talking.
WCPD lacks empathy is disheartening. You repeatedly stated the value of merchandise stolen and at no point shown sympathy towards what incited these protests. We are protesting the systematic bias, prejudice, and racism within the police department that has resulted in the widespread murder and police brutality of our Black and Brown Americans, specifically George Floyd, Miles Halls, and many others. Merchandise is replaceable, their lives are gone forever. Reevaluate your priorities. You have not acknowledged your department's participation in the exact system the protesters are calling out for failing to protect our most vulnerable communities. Start living by your apparent values of protecting lives first by making the need to crowd control large-scale events unnecessary by reforming the department to prevent the need for these protests in the first place. MLK marched on freeways for the same inequalities that continue to exist today, yet your department responds with the same unjustified violence used during the civil rights movements. The protest on the freeway is peaceful. The protest on the freeway is peaceful until tear gas and violence provoked a reaction. WCPD is twisting the story through their own internal report, and so is the council through questions aimed to frame protesters negatively. Why was a vehicle designed to enter very dangerous environments used for peaceful protests? Why do the police resort to violence? WCPD initiated violence and just admitted protesting on freeways can, and in this case, could have been peaceful. WCPD seems to highlight the occasional violent of protesters, but not the department's own majority use of violence first. The fact that the council did not condemn WCPD's admitted misconduct disturbs me. Have you learned anything? Failure to enact change perpetuates violence. I hope you're aware of your role, you're playing in history, and that you have failed. In regard to the protest, you said Walnut Creek, we don't see this often, and we will learn from this, and that is disturbing. You should not be learning how to use non-lethal force through mistakes made. That is lethal. You indirectly just admitted your officers are not adequately trained. You should be properly trained and prepared to protect peaceful protesters and not learning while doing. This further shows the mayor's need to create a more specific use of force continuum. The council's follow-up questions to WCPD's presentation shows you have not taken the time to personally educate yourself nor to become anti-racist. Your council and specifically the mayor have failed to show strong leadership and empathy for Black Lives Matter. Please evaluate your efficacy of serving our community. Thank you.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I just did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Hi, I'm Mark Chengye, and I'm a Walnut Creek resident. First off, you left the most important topic for the end, making your citizens wait six hours to speak. We see where your priorities are. I'm speaking on attachment aid of the PD response to eight can't wait. This wishy-washy response to reform does not bring justice to Miles Hall. For instance, it says, quote, "The Walnut Creek PD will no longer allow the use of a carotid hold," end quote. How is this going to hold police accountable and enforce these regulations? Eric Garner was still killed in New York by a chokehold, even though they had banned, they were banned at the time, and police often investigate their own reports of misconduct, and they protect their own. Derek Chauvin had 17 reports of misconduct, consistently targeting minorities, but was never held accountable before killing George Floyd. And there's a clause that states the Walnut Creek PD only authorizes deadly force when the, quote, "officer reasonably believes that there is an imminent risk of serious bodily injury or death," end quote. This is reasonable suspicion, and this is a primary cause of police brutality because police racially profile Black people, and the reasonable suspicion results in innocent people dying. Take Stephen Clark, for example. The police thought it was a life-or-death situation because they thought Stephen Clark was holding a crowbar. In fact, he was holding his cellphone. Reform isn't addressing the root of the problem. The police, as an institution, was built on the foundations of slave patrols back in the 1700s, so it's an inherently racist and dehumanizing system. The system was built broken, and it cannot be reformed to serve the people it was designed to target and discriminate against. We need structural change. I took a look at Walnut Creek's expenditures for fiscal years 2018 to 2020, and the biggest expenditure was on police. And you guys just ordered fancy lasso and beanbag guns and are asking for more money for training, more money than $26 million. You stated it would be hard to defund the police at a city level, but programs such as CalVip are based in cities to reduce gun violence with community-based intervention programs and lessen the need for police. Look into community-based city programs. I'm sure that there are some applicable. And when you defund the police, and you can defund the police rather than reducing library hours. Crime often happens.
Please, please wrap up.
Okay, I have one more sentence. Crime often happens when people are unable to meet their basic needs through other means. So fighting crime is not necessarily more cops and militarization of those cops, but it's more community centers, more jobs, more educational opportunities, more mental health centers, et cetera. Defund the police.
That's enough. Thank you very much. You've exceeded your time.
Kat?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Catherine Paulson. I've been a Walnut Creek resident for 17 years. Please show us you care by committing to releasing evidence of every claim made by the city and the police department about the protest, apologizing for the police brutality allowed to be inflicted in Walnut Creek, and banning those tactics in the future, granting the whole family's requests, using the next budget decision to cut from the police department, and dropping any charges incurred by protesters. I attended the peaceful protest on June 1st, and I'm upset by the city's mischaracterization of it. By saying aggressive protesters, you've discounted the brutal police officers. They tear gassed a 14-year-old. A kid I went to school with was attacked by police dogs and then arrested for assault with a deadly weapon because he threw back the tear gas. If it's deadly, why are cops allowed to use it on citizens? Why are our cops allowed to use tear gas, sponge bullets, and dogs to attack protesters? The protest was openly advertised as peaceful, and it heavily discouraged looting. So why use the excuse of us conflating us exercising our First Amendment rights with looters? It's offensive. Why were the police allowed to have no names or badge numbers visible? In the official response, you state you intended on low visibility and to limit law enforcement presence. If that's true, why were officers and dogs intimidating protesters the entire time? In regards to the eight can't wait attachment, I understand that the official campaign is at a federal level, but there's no reason we can't institute these policies in Walnut Creek. The police state that they more or less abide by each policy, but I disagree. If the cops are so well-trained in de-escalation, why are we here to talk about multiple recent de-escalation scandals? The police state they give verbal warnings, but in the videos of Miles Hall being shot to death, nobody yells, "I'm going to shoot." They say their officers exhaust all means before shooting, but nobody tays Miles Hall before shooting him six times, despite an officer there having a taser in their hand already. There is no reason five officers armed with tasers needed to shoot one person who needed help. This can never happen again, and the city needs to commit to that. We just want Walnut Creek to be on the right side of history. To do that, we're gonna need real answers and actions. Thank you for your time.
Bridgette?
Please check to see whether your mute is on. Bridgette? We can't hear you. Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know. I was on. My name is Bridgette Shanley. I lived in Walnut Creek for years and went to high school here. I was at the peaceful protest on June 1st. I noticed that you used the term "non-lethal force responses." However, as people have mentioned previously tonight, it's untrue that dogs, rubber bullets, and tear gas are non-lethal. A woman died last week from tear gas, and a friend of mine was arrested June 1st for throwing back canisters of tear gas. He was attacked by dogs and is being charged with assaulting an officer with a deadly weapon. How can it be a deadly weapon in his hands but non-lethal when the police shoot at children? Is it just because he's Black? You said police would plan for peace but prepare for violence, but what I witnessed at the protest did not show evidence of this. I saw officers with names and badges covered, smirking at us and slapping their batons in their hands. Some laughed at us. We were calling for peace, and they were trying to physically intimidate us. They were in riot gear, holding weapons, and in armored vehicles. We were unarmed, marching, and kneeling. People at the protest did not feel protected by police. We could tell they weren't trying to intimidate us. I wasn't even on the freeway. I was just marching. But I still felt the police were aggressive, and they looked eager to attack us. I arrived about an hour before the official start time, and the park was already surrounded by police, long before 6:00 PM, and before your officers attacked the teenage protesters. Many of the things in the official report are blatantly untrue, specifically what occurred on the freeway, and there needs to be an independent investigation of the event from a party that's not related in any way to the WCPD. I'd also like to see proof of the reported damage done by protesters, which should be available if the officers were wearing body cams. Walnut Creek Police caused all violence that happened during the protest, not the protesters. I'd also like to emphasize that Concord, a neighboring city, chose to have their police react differently to protests, and there were no weapons fired because police did not escalate the situation. While Walnut Creek Police seems to believe they behaved appropriately, the speakers at tonight's meeting have made it very clear that we think it was completely mishandled. You failed your residents, and you failed the city. Moving public comment to the very end in an attempt to silence us does not change us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, so I would like to respond, I would like to echo first on that the tear gas is not as a form of lethal weapons. I think there's various studies that show that these weapons can be used in a lethal capacity. As someone who is witnessing the incidents on the freeway, I think the police office, the report made was grossly misleading. I think that there was a substantial amount of officer violence toward the civilian population at the freeway. Specifically, I remember the officers were opening up their doors and hitting protesters purposely, and they were also almost running over protesters during that march. And that these escalations are due to the police officers' uses of violence against protesters on those situations. I would also like to address the council and ask for you to actually listen to your constituents. As many as us here have great, all stated the same exact phrase that the police officers are using disproportionate violence. Why the hell are police officers firing tear gas at people breaking the curfew? The curfew is not, breaking curfew is not a serious violation of the law. It does not hurt anyone, or it doesn't cause any violent damage, yet the police officers are still using tear gas, which has a capacity to cause permanent injuries on people, and predominantly younger people during these protests. And yet, you're still authorizing these uses. I ask you to please defund the police force and implement measures to stop these use, the use of tear gas and other weapons against civilian populations. Thank you. I view of my time.
Aunt Rafferty?
Good morning. I mean, this is actually a remarkable evening of some extremely high-quality public comment by constituents who've waited a very long time to make it. And there are several very consistent themes. Practically all of your constituents understand that there need to be substantial budget cuts to the police. There needs to be zero-based budgeting for the police. We need to see a 30% reduction. We can't have $12 million coming out of the library, social services, and everything else the city does without having the police bear the brunt of that $12 million shortfall. We also heard overwhelming evidence that for a year, the use of force and the proper techniques of engagement has been front and center, and there has been no progress in Walnut Creek. And we've heard compelling testimony about the demonstrations on January, on June 1st and 2nd, in which the police department seems to be kind of unaware of the possibility of having a peaceful demonstration on a freeway, which, having grown up in Washington, DC, is not a, is not an alien concept. So this is a really a triple fail here. And I'm glad tonight, and I think you heard that there are people who are as concerned as I am about the Brown Act and the First Amendment being respected by the city council. But it's clear that when you did your update in the last meeting, the city council, I'm sorry, the police department was already fully aware that they should be out helping merchants board up their stores to prevent a riot. Because yes, when there's looting, looters shoot looters. It's not an independent event. And the lack of preparation by the police department is responsible for both calamities. It's not, as was said, a separate crime scene. There just seems to be a complete lack of civilian control over the police department in Walnut Creek. That must change. And the way to change it is not a chief's advisory committee. It's a citizen review board. It's accountability, it's oversight, it's budget justification.
Mr. Referee, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Thank you. I just wanted to share a comment. So the point of should that was shared by the captain, I believe, the point of showing up downtown and having a police presence and swarming the area was to incite fear in people, to make them think twice. And that is acknowledgement that the police are aware that their presence causes people to be afraid. And that is a tactic that you're using in crowd control. Also, the defense of using tear gas was to hopefully get people to disperse in fear of the irritating side effects of the gas. That is yet again another point of using fear to do crowd control. Now, as someone within ambassadors in counseling psychology and someone who specializes in trauma, using trauma to control a crowd doesn't work. You cause panic, and when people panic, their prefrontal cortex, where all of their executive functions and decision-making and logical thinking happen, goes offline. So you might want to reconsider that, just as someone who knows about that. Additionally, whether the officer said, "Move or you will be dead," or "Move or you will be gassed," doesn't really seem here or there. The use of tear gas is a chemical weapon, which is against the Geneva Conventions. So I'm not actually sure how you justify the use of a chemical weapon, committing a war crime on the lives of those who you are sworn to protect and serve. Additionally, due to my personal medical issues, the use of tear gas on peaceful protests or non-peaceful protests prevents me from actually protesting. So the use of tear gas is preventing some people from exercising their First Amendment rights, which is maybe a consequence you didn't think about. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I, I don't even know what to say. I will say this. High quality, the comments that the caller made earlier about there being really high-quality comments was an understatement. Like, the comments tonight have been off the chain, off the charts, amazing. The amount of work and thought, like intellect, passion, and just effort that your constituents have put into explaining these issues to you over and over and over and over and over again pale in comparison to what we've all sat here now for over six hours to what we got in response. And, you know, I swear you probably wouldn't believe it, but I come into these things every time hopeful, thinking, okay, this time will be different, this time will be different, this time will be different. And it's just, you know, the amount of gaslighting, the amount of, the amount of time taken on self-congratulations, the amount of time with false equivalencies, like, results, results, results. It's just the golden rule. That's it. That's all you have to say. That's all you have to do. If it were your kids that were out there peacefully protesting, whether they're holding signs on the freeway, whatever, sitting crisscross applesauce, and they are not violent, and they shouldn't be met with violence. Period. The end. All of this other trotting out, these pictures of Black people carrying bags, only the Black looters, right? You couldn't find any pictures of anybody else other than the Black looters. These, this 5A, the litany of some of those, most of those fake, proven, documented, fake social media accounts. Of course, you picked the Black people for that, too, I'm sure. I mean, it is just, I do your research. Like, what happened to Walnut Creek? What happened to Walnut Creek is not isolated. It was across the country. There was so much.
Thank you, Vivian.
It's just disappointing. I don't know what to say.
Good, good, good winner. Thank you.
Lindsay?
So I want to make sure that we don't conflate what happened on Sunday with what happened on Monday, as I'm concerned that it's being used as a justification for the police inciting violence. Talking about the economic loss on Sunday and its significance or insignificance is a separate conversation from what took place on Monday. And I want to talk about Monday. The cost of what took place on Monday was far greater than the cost of what took place on Sunday. As a mental health professional, what stood out to me as I have listened on this call for seven hours now is that when several of our community members were talking about their experiences, and what you may have heard as well, was the trauma that I heard in their voices when they talked about what happened to them on Monday. So I would push back against the conversation about the economic loss that everyone is so upset about, and ask you to consider the psychological distress that was created by the police, the physical injuries that were created by the police, the fear, the loss of trust that was created by the police. They created that by escalating their response. Those all have a cost, too, and we need to Those all have a cost too, and we need to remember that the human cost is way more important than stolen merchandise. I'm also concerned, we haven't talked as much about this, is the decision to put a curfew into place and the duration for which it was put into place. All of the looting that I'm aware of, that I think was discussed today, took place during the day, not after what would later be quote unquote, after curfew hours. And I have to say, it really feels like the curfew was put into place simply to justify an escalation of force against peaceful protesters who were now breaking the law simply by being out of their homes. There are much better uses of our resources than enforcing a curfew. And I'm really, I'm not interested in the semantics of military vehicle versus not a military vehicle. It was there to intimidate. It was there to provoke. The damage caused to our community and to human beings is shameful. And it makes a clear statement about how the police use this community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hannah?
Hi, Hannah Edgar. I was born and raised in Walnut Creek. Pronouns are they/them? Yeah, gosh, I don't know where to begin. I guess I just echo what everyone else has said. I have a lot of questions about, you know, the presentations that just happened. I have a lot of questions about what qualifies as suspicious behavior. I have a lot of questions about the Walnut Creek Library being used as a police staging area. But what I would like to focus on now with the brief time that I have is, I just want to know and ask you all directly, I mean, we know what Walnut Creek Police's budget is. That's been discussed by many speakers before me. Seeing the purchases of the beanbag rounds and bowler wrap, I, I want to know what's, what's the itemized Walnut Creek Police budget? Like, you know, where you're patting yourself on the back for purchasing non-lethal or less than lethal, I suppose, weapons for the department. But how, how much money is being spent to just pad the weaponry that this police department is going to continue to amass when you've still got the firearms? You've still got the deadly force. You still have the Bearcat, you know, tank, whatever you want to call it. I agree with the last speaker. It's, it's all the same. It's all intimidation. It's an armored vehicle. So that's my first pointed question. I would like to know the itemized WCPD budget. And I also would like minutes from the civilian accountability board meetings. If those are publicly available, I would love for a member of the council to direct me to those. As I wrap up here, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Tom Hall?
Well, it's actually Scott Hall, not Tom Hall. So you guys went through quite a bit and each section should have had their own public comments, but unfortunately, things are compressed to one public comment section. So I will have to be brief and save some of my other comments for another day. But I will touch on a few key points. First of all, you know, there was a comment from Jay Chaplin about what can we do better? You can do better by starting to tell the truth. Admit when you do wrong, fix what you did wrong and move on. Don't try to gloss over it. Don't try to make it pretty. Don't say spun rounds and we civilians know, know them as rubber bullets. Speak the truth, speak a common language and admit when you were wrong. Secondly, you know, he went through the, the eight can't wait. And just a few questions come to my mind automatically is, at what point did your officers attempt to deescalate when you're dealing with Miles? What verbal warning did he receive? At what point did one of the, did one of the other officers attempt to intervene when Murphy started shooting? And I will say, and I, I took this from a statement made by Casey. So under oath, he said essentially, I shot because she shot. Now that doesn't sound like they intervened to help make the situation any better. And obviously that they didn't, they didn't exhaust all other possibilities before shooting. So there's a lot of holes there for the police department to deal with and address. Secondly, in terms of FOSAF, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not them, but I asked Dan Buckshai, how does he grade himself in his interactions with Buckshai, or excuse me, with FOSAF? And relaying that information clearly to the city council? Because I feel like there's some miscommunication happening between the meetings and the reality of what the city councils, city council is hearing. So I think the city itself needs to work on their own internal communications, as well as if I was a city council member and I was getting incomplete or incorrect reports back from one of my subordinates, they would be fired. Lastly, you know, a lot of the, the inappropriate interactions with police or police have had recently, most specifically the shooting that took place in Atlanta. The officer was fired immediately, as well as the chief of police resigned. So what, what do we have to do in Walnut Creek to have a similar situation, which is accountability for actions? And not trying to cover your ass for your actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Izzy?
Hi. Regarding what Captain Hill said in his report about the June 5th protest being in response to the video of the officer threatening the protester, that's not what these protests are about. These protests have been and will continue to be about being in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement, being for anti-racism and against police violence, especially against black people, which is stuff that's all happened here in Walnut Creek, as we've seen with Miles Hall, that we all know a lot about at this point. That felt so diminishing of the real reason and also showed a disconnection with the police department, the city and the movement. If one of you would actually go to these protests, you would know that they're not just people complaining about the police or every single detail about what's going on in just this city. It's about their lives that they experience racism in this town, in our schools, in the streets. And it's everybody voicing their pain of what it feels like to be a black person or a person of color in this city. That's what's important and that's what we're fighting for, along with justice in our own city with the things that have happened here. The message can't be forgotten. We have to remember all of it. And also, it's, it's very upsetting to hear how much the voices of this city are being stifled, both by FOSAF being threatened to be banned for bringing up something that's one of their main asks, which is accountability for the police officers that killed Miles, and the way that people have been treated in the past three meetings that I've attended. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy.
Jessie?
Hi, my name is Jessie McCann and I'm a Walnut Creek resident. It's disappointing but not surprising that the council would rather put parking and other business related matters first on the agenda, rather than prioritizing appeasing the urgent demands of its citizens and calling for action in accordance to the national movement, demanding that basic human rights for black lives be protected. It's disappointing but not surprising that the police would rather focus on the looting and the damage it had than the intentions of the protesters and the WCPD's own failed judgment of bringing in much more law enforcement than was needed. I understand the police are trying to do their job in protecting citizens, but protecting us is not the same as fear mongering, tear gassing, shooting rubber bullets and keeping us off the streets when it is well within our own first amendment right to protest. Resulting to tactics involving police brutality, to stop a police brutality protest is quite telling of the abuse of power this criminal justice system holds. It's also disappointing but not surprising that the council will discuss implementing eight can't wait campaign, campaign recommendations, but not consider the pivotal role defunding could have. Defunding the police is really not as radical as you might think. Defunding has worked before in other cities and there's a wide range of evidence to prove that police reform is not enough to deconstruct this inherently corrupt and racist system. Minneapolis, where George Floyd was brutally murdered, was a city known for progressive policing reform, but those efforts clearly have not been effective enough in stopping police abuse. Many of these reforms are unenforceable and rely on the discretion of police themselves to decide how they apply. Furthermore, to ensure these, these reforms are implemented, police, police departments will ask for even more funding, and that is the opposite of what we need in order to establish structural change. In response to George Floyd's murder, Minneapolis is now proposing to disband the police. And I believe that Walnut Creek should follow by example and bring justice, bring justice to Miles Hall, which has long been delayed. To repeat what other constituents have been advocating for, I demand that you defund the police and redirect the money to social services that can work to uplift our community instead of harm it.
Jessie?
Address all of our concerns, not just the ones that serve your own self-interest and coincide, coincide with your own personal opinions.
Jessie, you've used up your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua?
Hello. First, I just want to echo a lot of the other comments that it's really ridiculous for handling these really important issues at basically 1:00 AM now. This is not how we do democracy. This is not accountability. This is the opposite of what the public's been demanding. On the police response to the protests, where is your humanity? Tear gas is a chemical warfare agent that has been banned in war under the Geneva Protocol since 1925. It attacks the lungs of its victims. We're in a pandemic that also attacks people's lungs. So-called non-lethal bullets can still cause serious injury and death, and they're not meant to be shot at point blank range. On the fact that the protests happened on a freeway, how do you think MLK's March to Selma happened? It wasn't on the backstreets. They were on the freeway. Police sections on the freeway were escalatory and unjustified, endangering the health and safety of civilians. Tactics, tactics used to break up protests over the 6:00 PM curfew violation were also ridiculous. In regards to FOSAF's demands and police reforms, you can fire the police officers involved. I don't understand why that hasn't been happened. It should have happened from day one. That's under the city's jurisdiction. And I wonder how it has taken 18 meetings and over a year to organize a community listening session that should have happened right after that happened. In terms of the eight can't wait reforms, Walnut Police Department can do more. We need a non-police response to mental health, instead of more excuses about how it's not possible. We need use of force reforms that are common sense and evidence based. We need to require officers to deescalate whenever possible and to exhaust all other reasonable means before resorting to deadly force, not only when dealing with people in crisis. We need to ban officers from shooting at moving vehicles without exception. It is never safe to move at a moving, to hit at a moving target. And we need to require comprehensive reporting whenever officers simply point a firearm at civilians. The police department needs fundamental change. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua.
Janai?
Hi again. Tonight Jay Hill stated that absolutely no protesters had any injuries on June 1st because your police department doesn't know about them. They weren't reported, so it didn't happen. Recognize my profile picture? This is a peaceful protester after being shot in the face from the June 1st protest on Highway 680. That says Contra Costa County on the patch, doesn't it Chaplain? Did you stop to think that protesters are too busy going to the hospital or getting taken care of to report an act of violence from the people who are supposed to serve and protect them? So let's be honest. Your job is not to protect people. It's to protect capital. You don't care about people. You care about businesses and belongings. You don't care about human rights. You care about having a police state. And I don't care how many people you talk to in your private organizations and sessions and that you are exploring diversity. I don't see a single person of color who isn't white passing during this whole presentation. You don't know anything about struggle or even forget why we're protesting, do you? Oh, and you want to have a good police to protester ratio? You have military grade weapons. You want to be sure you're able to shoot us all? Black people did not choose to be born black and be subjected to systemic racism. You chose to be police officers. There's a difference. I suggest you listen to everything your constituents have said tonight, or you will see continuous backlash forever. You will not solve this issue by silencing us and trying to tiptoe around change by pretending that we already have a parallel to the eight can't wait policy in the Walnut Creek Police Department. We don't want eight can't wait. We want you gone. Your police officers are under extreme watch by the public. We see everything. Your officers are theoretically on their best behavior right now because they're under public eye. If this is how your police department conducts itself on its best days, you might want to consider the legitimacy of your police department and think about why we're defending defunding it. You cannot fool us anymore and democracy dies in darkness. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Nico?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nico Albert and I've been a resident of Walnut Creek since I was four years old. And I attended both the June 1st and the June 5th protests, as well as others outside of Walnut Creek. And I have a question for the city council, police department and anyone in a position of power who has attended this meeting. Are you listening to us? Do you hear what you're saying and what we're saying? Mr. Hill earlier said that there were no injuries to protesters, which I find interesting considering someone who spoke during the previous public comment section said his mother, an amputee, was hit. And there have been other injuries I've seen evidence of on an Instagram page called the WC underscore solidarity. And Janai, who just spoke about getting shot in the head. I'm thankful that you've stated your support for the protests, but no matter what you say, it doesn't match, if you're, it doesn't matter what you say if your actions don't echo that statement. Why no mention of the rubber bullet that shattered a window of someone who was not protesting this car's window? Why are the officers that murdered Miles Hall still allowed to be in the streets? Why are they not behind bars? I didn't plan on speaking, but after listening to nearly seven hours of barely a word of accountability, I'm honestly sick to my stomach. A member of the council saying mixed views about what happened on June 2nd, 2019, in reference to police murdering an individual going through a mental health crisis where you didn't even say the victim's name, which is Miles Hall, is frankly abhorrent. I really genuinely hope that changes are made, but the council members at this meeting have not given anyone listening a reason to hope. Thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ally?
Ally, please check your mute button. Ally?
Can you hear me all right?
Now I can, yes. Thank you.
All right. It just takes a long time to rejoin the call in a way that anyone can hear you. So I have a lot of feelings and a lot of stuff that I'm not going to say because frankly, two minutes is an abysmal amount of time to speak. So I'm just going to say this real quick, that no one who attended the June 1st protest appreciates the spin that's been put on the events of that day. Most especially, no one appreciates the emphasis being put on rocks or water bottles thrown at police officers decked out in riot gear, especially in light of, in light, in lights of the lack of addressing that two of the protesters who were brutalized, namely a young man attacked by dogs and police, and the young woman who was shot in the head with a rubber bullet. I cannot believe that you aren't aware of these injuries because they both ended up in the news all over the Bay Area. Looting is no excuse for the militarization of our police force. Property can be replaced. Lives and time lost, lives and time lost due to serious injuries and unnecessary incarceration cannot. I understand that you may have had good intent going out there, but your impact does not show that. An impact is much greater than intent. You all need to be listening much more carefully and taking much better actions in the long run because you have shown no willingness to listen and no willingness to approve. I yield my time.
Thank you.
Dylan?
Hi there. There's actually two of us, so I'm wondering if we're going to have two minutes each because we're on one computer. because we're on one computer.
Okay.
Sure, okay. Emily Moffett again. I want to emphasize that when I met with Councilmember Waddell, he emphasized the importance of bringing solutions to problems. So I'd like to clearly state a problem and a solution. The problem: The after-action analysis from May 31 to June 5 that was reported on tonight was internally authored. This is similar to an employee violating an HR policy, like, let's say, being accused of sexual harassment and then allowing the employee to complete their own investigation. That's absolutely absurd. Solution: Use some of Walnut Creek Public Department's very large budget to hire an independent outside investigator to inform the people of Walnut Creek what actually happened between May 31 and June 5. And more importantly, actually make it a permanent group with authority, not a group that is governed by the chief of police. This is also my friendly reminder to everyone here who's still listening that we all get to vote, and many of these council members have been on this council for a very long time. It is time to make your voice heard by voting. I yield my time to my husband.
Hi, Dylan Moffett, resident of Walnut Creek as well. And in addition to the accountability aspects that my wife spoke to, I think it's important to know that one of the things that we learned recently is that from a budget standpoint, and this, I guess, is really for the other folks listening who've spoken up, and I really appreciate all the eloquent words from the other speakers, that from a budget standpoint, as I understand it, the city council approves budgets that are created and crafted by the city manager. And so we do have the opportunity to potentially influence that as well by communicating with our city council members our opinions, such as we did tonight, and also by voting. So I would encourage you to keep doing both of those things. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Adam Neiman?
Hi there. This is Adam Neiman, pronouns he/him/his, Walnut Creek resident. And I would like to start by requesting that Walnut Creek City Council open public comment on these issues again and give the option to hear public comment today as well as on another date. Clearly, there are many, many comments right now. And that, by giving another opportunity for people to speak, that would give another chance for folks who wanted to share tonight but weren't able to because it is past 1 o'clock in the morning, and maybe they have work tomorrow morning or just they're too tired, so they can still share their opinion. I would also like to just spend some time and go over... So there was some talk of the lack of clear language in the release that the police sent out about the eight-can't-wait, and there are just a couple of questions that I have. For example, for the first one about requiring de-escalation, what does it mean when you say significant amount of training in de-escalation and crisis intervention? How many hours does that actually translate to? For requiring warning by officers when shooting, what does where feasible and reasonable efforts mean? Those sound like they could be argued in just about any situation, depending on an officer's point of view. In terms of banning chokeholds and strangulations, what does less-than-lethal mean? Why is it not just non-lethal? What are we doing that is less-than-lethal? And why aren't we just making sure that it's all non-lethal action? In terms of banning shooting at moving vehicles, grateful that there are some changes underway, but what about life-threatening circumstances? What does that actually mean? Yes, I understand what it's supposed to mean, but in practice, it can be defended many other ways. And in terms of requiring officers to exhaust all means before shooting, a verbal warning should precede the use of deadly force where feasible. What does where feasible actually mean? In addition, what are the consequences for breaking any of these policies? If we don't ban these actions full stop, officers can still have the option of evading justice at all costs. And a reminder that eight-can't-wait is only the tip of the iceberg. Thank you for your time.
Roman?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to be reading from eighttoabolition.com. While communities across the country mourn the loss of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, Jamelle Floyd, and Miles Hall, and so many more black victims of police murder, Campaign Zero released its eight-can't-wait campaign offering a set of eight reforms they claim would reduce police killings by 72%. As police-in-prison abolitionists, we believe that this campaign is dangerous and irresponsible, offering a slate of reforms that have already been tried and failed that mislead the public newly invigorated to the possibilities of police-in-prison abolition and that do not reflect the needs of criminalized communities. We honor the work of abolitionists who have come before us and those who organize now. A better world is possible. We refuse to allow the blatant co-optation of decades of abolitionists organizing toward reformist ends that erases the work of black feminist theorists. As the abolitionist organization Critical Resistance recently noted, eight-can't-wait will merely, quote, "improve policing's wars on us," end quote. Additionally, many abolitionists have already debunked eight-can't-wait campaigns' claims, assumptions, and faulty science. The 1 through 8 are "defund police," "demilitarize communities," "remove police from schools," "free people from jails and prisons," "repeal laws that criminalize survival," "invest in communities self-government," "governance," "provide safe housing for everyone," "invest in care, not cops." The end goal of these reforms is not to create better, friendlier, or more community-oriented police or prisons. Instead, we hope to build toward a society without police or prisons where communities are equipped to provide their safety and well-being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Hello, mayor and council members. My name's Nicole, a very sleepy resident of Walnut Creek and member of your community advisory board, serving the chief and the police. And what I hope that you can hear tonight is that while the underpinnings of eight-can't-wait and other campaigns are important, they are simply guideposts. What we are asking for is a foundation of de-escalation and rethinking of public services and policing. It is possibly for me to believe deeply that Captain Hill, Lieutenant Reese, and Chief Chaplain are amazing people and dedicated to communities that I also think that they could rethink the way they're doing things. And so what we're asking for is a spectrum of services. And that while I hope that you can check off where we relate to other, you know, eight-can't-wait and other campaigns, we're also understanding that there is more work to be done. I also point to Councilmember Silva's comments, which outlined the way in which Walnut Creek has led around social services related to homelessness and invested in resources and time and gotten other cities to do so that caused a sea change with the county. Indeed, the city does invest in issues related to sort of elder abuse, say, for example, as we're in Elder Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. You have a history of doing so, and I ask for you to continue. Lastly, as a member of the community advisory board, I think we need clear direction as to what we are expected to do. I'm here it being referred to as an oversight body, and that it's not how we are undertaking our conversations. We are indeed taking on weighty topics, but if the expectation is oversight, that is a different solution, and I think we need to be clear about that. I again want to thank the Walnut Creek Police for their work in a very challenging time. And I ask the city, my elected officials, to direct more. And I trust that as a very proud resident of Walnut Creek, that we can lead the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Abe?
Hi, I'll try to keep this under two minutes because I also am very tired. But I do want to point out, I was going to lower my hand if it was said before, but I want to point out that, like, the captain made an admission that on the second protest, the one that happened on June 5, there was a much lower police presence. And that protest went off without any incidents of violence. And so there was an admission that when there was heightened police presence, we saw more violence. And also to look at a model of a city where defunding the police has worked, just in case you haven't heard of it, Camden, New Jersey, is a good model. I don't know exactly what they did there, but they defunded the police, and over time, they saw a 40% reduction in crime. So I would encourage the council to look at that model and look towards defunding the police. I was initially for eight-can't-wait. I actually sent an email about it. And then doing more research, I think it's kind of a waste of time. Maybe it's still a good starting point if you do it without increasing funding, but I would encourage the council to look more into defunding and also to not use county regulations or state as an excuse because if those are getting in the way, then you should be fighting them at all costs. So I yield my time. Thank you.
Tom Hall?
Hello. So I do want to thank you guys for putting us on the agenda tonight. I do appreciate that. But I did want to address some things that I heard tonight from Dan Buckshai, and that's regarding mental health and how it's only allowed for the county and that, you know, they're going to look to the county every time or the state to make change here in Walnut Creek. We're seeing it all over. We're seeing it in San Francisco. We're seeing it in Oakland, that there are other alternatives to the mentally ill, that the police don't have to respond. So we're asking for you guys to be innovative. I've been asking you to be innovative for a year now. And it's disappointing to hear that you guys keep going back to the state. Yes, that's going to be our long-term goal. We want to have that type of response. We need that response. We need a non-police response to the mentally ill every time. But we need it to start in Walnut Creek. So that is my plea to you, the city council members. And I appreciate Cindy asking about that and really prying about that because you can't keep going back to it's a statewide issue. It's a county issue. No, it's actually a city issue. And you guys murdered my son on June 2 when he was in a crisis and he needed help. So there has to be a different way. And I just want to make sure you guys understand that we are family, and Miles was a beloved child. And he is beloved by the community. And he did not deserve to die that day. And it is important for you guys to always remember that, that he was loved, and he was taken too soon from our family. And we need you guys to make change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Atiya?
Hi. My name's Atiya. I'm a resident of Walnut Creek. I've lived here for about seven years. This is my first city council meeting, and I wasn't planning on speaking or even really just spending my whole evening on this. But I felt moved to speak in response to Walnut Creek's evident lack of a response to all of these issues. I'm incredibly disappointed, and I just want to echo the demand for the city to consider policies beyond eight-can't-wait, especially with regard to defunding the police in favor of community services. I get the impression that the city could do a lot more research into what it means to defund the police and implement these services as some of the questions seemed to indicate to me that there wasn't as much knowledge on that topic. I'm also just frustrated with the consistent avoidance of addressing the concerns of the speakers and also the evidence of harm brought up by speakers. I'm not going to go into specifics, but this isn't limited to just... Like, there is the consistent insistence on these internal investigations and reviews and the ignorance of evidence of all these, like, physical and psychological harm. I'd also just like to echo the demand for more time to listen to public comments. It is 1:00 in the morning, and I'm sure many more people had things to say. And I know that it's not standard for the city council to address public comments, at least in the moment. But I do find it frustrating that we had two hours of public comments, and then many of the questions asked by council members did not reflect the concerns of those public comments and seemed to be more limited to the scope of what was being discussed in the police chief and the police captain's presentations. So I'd just like to say we need accountability, and I'd also like to thank the other speakers for just making some incredible points and demanding change. So thank you.
Thank you.
E.G. Crowder?
Okay, I have to let you guys know that whenever we're trying to get on here, it's not us that's hesitating. You could probably invest a better system so that we don't get all anxious because now I have to refocus on what I was going to say. I always have to get on and share with you that Nami-Contra Costa County has been trying to address the issues around how law enforcement respond to individuals in crisis for a very long time, even before Miles Hall was killed. And Walnut Creek did not show up as often as some other cities for the county-sponsored crisis intervention training. I am frustrated because I showed up at a board meeting now just about 10 months ago, and I said I wanted to work with the city. I wanted to work with the city before you lost public trust. Right now, this will continue happening every two weeks. You'll all be away from your families, listening to public comments when there's opportunities for you to have a solution. And the solution is to acknowledge you do not have the skill set to respond to a mental health crisis without support. I'm hearing you say that the MCRT could be an answer. It's not the answer. The reason why they have such a low... And the county said they're underutilized is because family members have frankly given up on utilizing the MCRT. One vehicle for this large of a county is not going to solve the problems. I'm in this movement with FAWCET because I realize there need to be policy changes. One should never show up to a medical emergency with guns in hand when the individual you're going to support because they're in crisis doesn't have a gun, okay? That's not the approach you need to take. When I speak, I don't live in Walnut Creek, but I'm representing over 300 people who are Nami members who do live in Walnut Creek. I want to see a Miles Hall law that teaches Walnut Creek how to be a leader in responding to mental health.
E.G.
We're here to help you.
E.G. Please, thank you.
We have Janai, but she's already spoken. And then I can read the written public comments into the record.
Well, you might as well. Please, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Vera Portnova, and I have been a Walnut Creek resident almost the entirety of my life. Thank you for your time today. I'm commenting on behalf of Miles Hall and to bring up the following issues. The city used excessive force. One, the city used excessive force again. On June 1, 2020, Walnut Creek PD unleashed police dogs, tear gas, and rubber bullets on peaceful civilians protesting police brutality. Walnut Creek PD acted more like 1963 Alabama when it unleashed its violent police dogs on unarmed protesters. The ACLU is currently suing the administration for doing the same thing in DC. Two, Walnut Creek city leaders are in need of diversity and anti-bias training for all law enforcement and leadership. In June 9 city council meeting, one council member made a special point to encourage a caller who spewed racist tropes and racially-charged conspiracy theories from known white supremacist groups. Walnut Creek needs a zero-tolerance stance against racism. Three, we demand a 24/7 non-police mobile response option for mental health crises. It would save lives, police resources, and money. We want city council to add this to their agenda now. And four, police accountability begins with a bare minimum of hashtag eight-can't-wait. While this would still not be enough, it is the very least that we should have expected years ago. Contrary to Chief Chaplain's recent statement, Walnut Creek does not require all eight use-of-force policies because its policy language is either vague, nonexistent, or not enforced. Vera Portnova, project coordinator at Golden Bear Sleep. Dear city council, I read the entire report made by the city manager's office and the police department and was astounded and was astounded at the narrative it told. As a member of the community who was there on June 1st and after speaking to dozens of protesters, the report seems to only have told one side of the story. I'm disappointed that the allegations against protesters on the freeway are only supported by anonymous officers' eyewitness accounts, yet allegations against police by protesters were unconfirmed. Does the city not weigh the eyewitness accounts of protesters with the same respect as officers? Did the city reach out to the young woman hit in the head with a projectile by police for an interview? Did the city make an attempt to interview any protesters? Did the city review video and photo evidence that shows police breaking a car window with a rubber bullet? Can we have the 911 transcripts instead of just taking your word for it? Did the man who allegedly spit on, who was allegedly spit on by a protester, make an assault report? Is there an insurance report to prove that a protester did break his back window? Is there concrete evidence of protesters jumping on cars, or do we just have to take your word for it? Did cops in riot gear really think projectiles being thrown at them justified tear gassing a 14-year-old? Especially when they cannot even clarify exactly what projectiles were being thrown, because as far as I've heard, there were only water bottles thrown. As a member of the community who has seen firsthand how your police respond to peaceful protesters, you should have done an independent investigation instead of trusting the very group that the community is criticizing. Sincerely, Grace S. This next email is from Byron Hirahara. Dear Walnut Creek City Council, the tragic death of Mr. George Floyd is a travesty and warrants the peaceful protests that have taken place across the country and world and hopefully will result in some positive changes on many levels. In Walnut Creek, the peaceful protests were indicative of a community that cares about many important concerns. And they were a step in the right direction to highlight the importance of addressing these issues. Unfortunately, a minority of criminals, not protesters, were set on creating damage, destruction, and looting in Walnut Creek, hiding behind the peaceful protests to steal and create as much mayhem as possible. As a 25-year Walnut Creek resident, downtown business and property owner, I'm very appreciative of the proactive and appropriate response that our police department and supporting agencies made to limit the theft and damage that would have impacted downtown retailers and restaurants that were already struggling to survive with the pandemic restrictions. Their efforts effectively saved our downtown from much more significant damage and destruction. Additionally, the incidents on and around I-680 freeway that turned violent could have easily resulted in multiple injuries and even fatalities had the non-lethal measures not been implemented. So the actions taken to de-escalate the mounting situation were completely appropriate and effective. Lastly, the effective blocking of a mob of looters headed to the San Miguel residential neighborhood was critical in protecting its residents. And again, enabled us to avoid significant property damage, looting, and potential injuries and deaths. In closing, I support and appreciate the actions taken by our city, police department, and supporting agencies 100%, and I feel safer knowing that they demonstrated incredible leadership, restraint, judgment, at the same time, used non-lethal force to protect many lives and properties. Sincerely, Byron Hirahara. This is from Brooklyn Joseph. It should be clear that the police are not protecting the people. One can look at the incidents across the country of unnecessary police killings and even look close to home in the case of Miles Hall. When someone commits a minor crime, they should not be met with deadly force. When someone is having a mental breakdown, they should not be met with deadly force. When someone inhabits black skin, they should not be met with deadly force. It is time for every city council to look closely at their budgets, especially when it comes to policing. While crime rates continue to fall, police budgets have continued to rise. While budgets seem to be cut from schools, mental health services, and other preventative programs, police budgets do not face those same cuts. We must begin putting our resources into the programs that we know reduce crime in the long run, rather than focusing on programs that are purely reactive. We must create departments that are capable of responding to mental health calls quickly and compassionately. We must eliminate the use of violent policing tactics that have led to unnecessary injuries and death. #eightcan'twait, #blacklivesmatter, #justiceformiles. This next email is from Judith Schumacher Jennings. Comment on 5A update to civil unrest events of city council meeting 616. I would like to read the statement. Thank you. On June 1st, protesters took over a portion of Highway 680. Transportation infrastructure has a significant meaning for African-American community. In the 50s and 60s, New York City planner Robert Moses and Chicago Mayor Richard Daley used highways to clear slums through poor and minority neighborhoods. In that era, cities throughout the country that wanted to redevelop poor neighborhoods got more federal money for building highways through those neighborhoods than by appealing for urban renewal funds. Nathan Conley, a historian at Johns Hopkins University, wrote that the resulting highways were then meant to speed whites who moved to the suburbs back and forth to jobs and attractions to downtown, leapfrogging minority communities along the way. Transportation has long been central to the Black Civil Rights Movement, with the Selma March, the Freedom Rides, Rosa Parks' appeal to equal rights on public buses, and the March Against Fear inspired by James Meredith. Martin Luther King led the 1965 March, which occupied the full width of the iconic Edmund Pettus Bridge in Selma. Although our nation began with acts of nonviolent resistance, think of the Boston Tea Party. Henry David Thoreau enshrined the phrase "civil disobedience" in his writings and suggested that it was akin to civic responsibility. Houston Police Chief Art Acevedo walked arm-in-arm with the women during a Justice for Floyd event. Acevedo has embraced protesters and said, "We want to make sure that the movement is safe." He has expressed his hope that the outrage over George Floyd's death would spark change. He said he thinks this is a watershed movement. It's calling. The complete email will be posted on our website and provided to the city council. And then I have one more. This is from DV Dems Information, Catherine Durham Hammer. Catherine Durham Hammer, Concord, California. I'm here on behalf of a community coalition for demilitarization and nonviolent response. The coalition of local groups includes Friends of Scott, Alexis, and Ton Hall, NAMI Contra Costa, Mount Diablo, Peace and Justice Center, Together We Stand, Together We Will Contra Costa, Showing Up For Racial Justice Contra Costa, Anti-Racist Educators and Lovers of Education of Contra Costa County, the Diablo Valley Democratic Club, Lori Wolfe of Danville, Indivisible Ree Sisters of Walnut Creek, Indivisible Central Contra Costa County, National Organization of Women Contra Costa County, San Ramon Valley Democratic Club, Conquered Communities Alliance, and the Women's March Contra Costa. Our coalition submitted a letter for the record on Friday, June 12th, regarding both the law enforcement response to the protest in Walnut Creek on June 1st, 2020, and the work to avoid another community disaster like what happened on June 2nd, 2019, when the Walnut Creek Police shot and killed Miles Hall. Both were militarized violent responses by the city of Walnut Creek to nonviolence in our community. The response on June 1st suggests that little progress has been made for demilitarization and nonviolent response to noncriminal behavior since June 2nd, 2019. Our asks are: One, immediate disuse of military weapons and tactics against protesters by WCPD and its partners in law enforcement. Two, a full report explaining under whose supervision and direction these tactics were deployed on June 1st, 2020. Three, reaffirmation and recommitment of the city's and police department's intent to reform its response to mental health calls, demonstrations, and other nonviolent calls for police response. Four, Mayor asks you to take the mayor's pledge set forth at obama.org. And again, that email will be posted on our website and provided to the council in its entirety. That completes the written comments that I have received. We do have one more additional live public comment from Kelly.
So this is actually Michael Sampson, this is not Kelly. But I just wanted to say a few more words before we wrap this up, just because... Well, first, just want to mention that I'm really inspired by what I've seen and heard from the members of our community, the passion and intelligence that people have been bringing to this issue. And after hours and hours of testimony from these citizens, I was hopeful that you all would start to change your tone around how you talk about these issues, and that didn't happen at all throughout the night. When we closed public comments and went to the next presentation, the bias and the contempt and the lack of empathy for what people in your community have been screaming to you for hours, just completely ignored. Like, I have to wonder whether or not you actually represent us, because if you did, wouldn't you be channeling our anger? But that's not happening at all. And then after all of that, when we finally opened up comments again, and Miles Hall's father came on to give comments, and you cut him off. But I know his two minutes was up, but this is Miles Hall's dad, killed by your police department, and you had the nerve to cut him off? Unbelievable. I was stunned when I saw that. The disrespect, unbelievable. If there's anybody who's still listening right now, I want to remind you all, or maybe inform you for the first time, that we are protesting in front of City Hall from 12 to 1 every single day. From noon to 1 every single day, we're protesting in front of City Hall. Also, I mentioned my mother was hit by a rubber bullet. I'm not sure if you can see this image. That's the bruise that she got from your police. All right. So when the people are talking about our pain, we're not making it up. It's real. So listen. I suspect a lot of you will be out of the job come November.
We have Lucine.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to say that the outpouring of support from the community, for the community, highlights the fact that your citizens are telling you to do your job. Every time you hear a citizen speak up, you know that there are at least a dozen more that have not said something. You know that your power is temporary so long as we allow you to be there. And come November, many of you are going to be up for election. Please keep that in mind as you go ahead. The money speaks. We see where the budget currently is set, and we know that your priorities are not set towards taking care of the people. Please keep that in mind ahead of November and ahead of the future. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've hit the end of public comment. Is there any council member that would like to speak?
Provide some direction to staff, because there were a lot of things that were on the report.
Right. Actually, Councilmember Silver, would you go first, please?
So I will circle back. First of all, you know, thank you to everyone who spoke. This has been a lengthy amount of public comment period. And it occurred twice during the meeting, once at the beginning of the meeting or relatively soon, and then once at the end. And so I would appreciate everyone who stayed to be a part of it and to provide their comments. There's a lot of information out there. And the issue, from my perspective, and the late May, early June issues, I think we are still waiting for complete information. I think both the police department was clear about that when they made their presentation, that it might be, I would assume, a number of weeks, if not a couple more months, before all of this information can be compiled. And so I hope the department will be willing to come back and talk to us again and present the additional information. I'm hoping that the chief will be walking the advisory committee, and it's an advisory committee, it's not an oversight board, those 16 people through what happened and with more detail. And let those 16, who represent a very broad spectrum of the community, have an opportunity to really drill down and ask a lot of questions. Because it'll be in an environment that is more conducive to it than at 1 o'clock in the morning. And I think there's an opportunity to do that. In terms of the requests for an examination of use of force, how our policies align, eight can't wait is a series of phrases. AB 392 is state law. I think when we look at use of force and if it's being implemented correctly here in Walnut Creek and appropriately, we need to look first and foremost at state law. And then see if our community thinks we need to go further than state law. Many of the phrases that people were talking about tonight that they were confused by are straight from state law, cases in the Ninth Circuit Court, federal case law. It may not be... It's state law, and it's recent state law, AB 392. It just went into effect early this year. So I think there's just more work to be done there. And I am hopeful that the chief with the advisory committee that he has will be able to ferret out where they want to go from here and then, you know, be reporting back, maybe right after Labor Day. I think to expect anything to happen in the next two weeks is probably unrealistic, given the constraint with which we can put people in a room. This is the environment everybody still has to work in. The, Dan, City Manager, I'm hoping the crisis, the mobile crisis team from the county, there seems to be some differing points of views on their view, on their effectiveness, but I think we need to talk to them. And you said you would be able to do that. We've got to figure out a way to get a 24-by-7 response available to our community and other communities. You're moving on the facilitator for the listening sessions and the training. Having been in the consulting environment and things like that 20 years ago, I would caution to not rush things, because usually a facilitator needs to assess the environment once they've been selected and before they actually define the solution that they suggest to implement. They're not pulling something cookie cutter off the shelf. If you're buying cookie cutter off the shelf, you can start rolling things out pretty quickly. But I think it may take some time. And I think we need to get that district attorney's report to us, because there's information that's in all these investigations that we don't know what that says. But then, once we have that information, we will all be in a position to be able to speak from a point of at least the facts as we know them and then also be able to refer that on to the Attorney General. How the Attorney General chooses, we can't tell the Attorney General what their job is, but we can ask the Attorney General. And finally, I would say... And I've forgotten what I was going to say. There is a complete... I think I can leave it there. Nope, it's gone. Thank you.
Next?
I don't know. I'll go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me just start off by thanking everyone that attended this meeting. It's been a long meeting. There's no doubt about that. And of course, I think all of us would have to say that we wish it wasn't 1:45 and we'd be concluding this, and the 43 attendees wouldn't be online and we'd be doing this in the middle of the day, but this is the situation we're in. While it's clear that I don't support everything that was said tonight, I truly do appreciate the ability to, once again... come together and listen to the individual perspectives of the community and obtain a better understanding of where each of you are coming from, and to learn from your experiences, just as Councilmember Wilk and I did when we attended the Wanacreek protest. As the mayor essentially stated tonight, and as Councilmember Francois stated last meeting, and no, he was not supporting racists. One does not need to support whatever one states in the public square. But we should all, we should all fight to ensure that everyone has the right to do so, just as I would hope each of you would do for me. I am a firm believer that only through more speech, more discussion, and more ideas will we, as a community and as a country, come together and be better and stronger on the other side. Now, this does not mean that we need to put up with racists, but it does mean that our greatest amendment provides them with the right to spew their hatred, no matter how much we dislike it. But it also gives all of us, all of you, the opportunity to rebuff their hate with data and facts and love. While I know it will go without saying, but my heart does truly go out to all those who have lost their loved ones, their community members or their friends during interactions with police across this country, including, yes, including, and I will say his name, Miles Hall. As for the activities, the protests and eluding, there is no doubt that these are separate activities and should in no way be convoluted. I have been moved by the protests that occurred in Wanacreek and across our nation. Again, Mr. Wilk and I attended the protest on Monday, and I attended the protest on Friday. Each of those protests, and this does not include what happened on Sunday, had an overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly majority of individuals that were peaceful and spoke their perspectives to power. Yet, it is clear that there are differences in perspectives on the need for the police response on Monday, and what even qualifies as a non-peaceful protesting activity amongst many other topics. However, even without this common understanding, it does not excuse the city, nor their PD, of all responsibilities, or absolve the city of any questions. I, myself, have my own questions. As member of the Public Safety Subcommittee, I hope that we can leverage the committee and the chief's community-based organization to dig deep into these issues and propose changes to include their response. But it should be noted that this isn't all one-sided. By and large, the police activities that occurred in our, in our city protected our citizenry. Again, that does not absolve us of all questions. But I commend our police for the activities and the protection that they provided the city. I think it's also important that all of us answer the main point that was questioned tonight. And I want to be clear about this. I stand directly alongside California Representative Karen Bass, the chairman of the Congressional Black Caucus. She stated that defunding the police would be horrible for our communities, especially communities of color. Her position, my position, again, obviously does not mean that there are no bad cops. This does not mean that the cops can do no wrong, nor does it mean that there is no changes that need to be addressed. This does mean that we should recognize that each of us must stop talking past each other and start listening to one another in order to drive positive change. And yes, to be clear, that does include me. No matter how hard your position is on this topic, I can guarantee you that there are issues that we, as a community, together can take action upon to improve our community, public safety, and the responses to many of our social woes, like de-escalation techniques, our response to drug use and mental health care amongst many, many others. Yet, while this is undeniably true, this message is being drowned out by the bombacity and rhetoric that fills most of our TV and our Twitter feeds. All of us owe it to each other and to our community to come together and recognize that we cannot move forward with positive change if we do not come to the same table, ask each other difficult questions, and work together. I, for one, am very interested in hearing more about, amongst others, what, if any, services are current, that we currently provide from the police or responded to by the police department can be handled by other departments or other agencies? What agencies or community partnerships can we leverage in order to provide support to many of our current social woes, like mental health care, homelessness, and others? What is the appropriate use of canines, and should they be used in protest activities? Does it make sense to ban or restrict the use of tear gas or other quote-unquote "non-lethal" uses of force? Does it make sense to restrict SWAT vehicles in protests? Or other vehicles that can be confused as military vehicles? Are there additional training opportunities that we invest in, amongst other, de-escalation and mental health care responses? Again, this is not a inclusive list. Are there outreach activities that we can take to form a closer connection to the community, especially those communities of color? How can we better educate the community on what the city, and even city council members and the mayor can and cannot do? As an example, I've heard demands tonight about prosecutions on behalf of the city. I've also heard demands of the mayor's taking unilateral decisions, which she cannot do, none of us can do. Now, I will be honest, I don't know these answers. I don't know the answers to these questions. And I believe it's important that all of us acknowledge that. But I am dedicated to getting to the bottom of them, among of these questions and others. And I know the same is true for the city manager, his management team, the chief, his command staff, and the rest of the city. And I know that all of us, all of us are dedicated to assisting the city and this council through this process.
Done?
I'm done.
Mr. Francois, would you please go on?
That was a hard act to follow. I appreciate Councilmember Waddell's thoughtful comments. I also appreciate the many commenters. I think at one time, we had over 100 people in the queue watching and attending. I applaud that we are a city that's open to transparency, that's willing to ask the hard questions, to willing to have a conversation in a forum like this. In fact, we had two of them tonight, as Councilmember Silva pointed out, where we allowed public communication at the beginning on items that we also allowed at the end. And I know it's difficult, and I know the bureaucracy is a pain. It's a pain for us, too, frankly. But we have to comply with the law and go through that, and have staff reports, and be able to ask questions. But it's also important that we hear from all of you. And the comments were all very thoughtful and productive, and will help us as we formulate policies going forward. None of us on this council, and none of the good people in our police department, would ever condone the use of tear gas or rubber bullets on peaceful protesters. That's not who we are as a city, or a community, or a country, or society. So I just want to put that out there. Based on the facts as we know them, I don't believe that happened here. But I also know that some lessons were learned from the events of, of May 30th to June 5th. And some of them, including on June 1st, for the first time ever, as Captain Hill told us, essentially, we had people breaching the freeway. That had never happened in a protest situation before. It hadn't been relayed to our police department before. So there wasn't an opportunity to really think ahead and prepare for that. In contrast, once that happened for the first time on June 1st, by June 5th, those on-ramps were blocked off, so that couldn't happen again. So in the space of four days, we made some pretty tremendous progress, I think, on ensuring that that type of activity was cut off and wouldn't happen again. Another thing I'm impressed by is the chief's decision to immediately recognize that in any kind of mutual aid situation, or any kind of Walnut Creek-only situation, the use of canine units is not appropriate in a protest situation. He's made that commitment on behalf of our city, and he's also talked to the other chiefs. When they're coming to help in from mutual aid call on a protest situation, there's not going to be canine units involved. So that's an immediate change. I agree also, I know Councilmember Waddell quoted the chair, the head of the Black Caucus, I believe, in the state legislature. I had seen an op-ed in The Chronicle that was written by Willie Brown, who's someone I admire, who's former mayor of San Francisco and Speaker of the Assembly, which I would encourage everyone to read, because I, I thought it was well-reasoned. And his point was defunding the police is a bad policy and terrible politics. And I agreed with the reasoning in his, in his statement. Like, I don't subscribe to this false dichotomy between we can either support people of color or the police, but not both. I think we can do both. And I think we're, we're a better community when we do both, when we sit down and when we talk to each other, and we try to work through these hard conversations together. That's what we're called upon to do now, more than ever. And I would just close by saying, I know a lot of people are hurting right now, and we all want to be part of the healing process. And I think we all recognize, or I'll speak, just speak for myself. I recognize that that involves me and people that look like me learning more about implicit racial bias. And the city manager talked tonight about the very significant funding that we're going to put in a budget at a time when we're facing a $12 to $15 million deficit. The significant amount of funding, we're putting our money where our mouth is on that very important issue. And so I'll just close with that. And I want to thank, thank staff, I want to thank Captain Hill, I want to thank City Manager Buckshai, and also the city attorney, and of course, Lieutenant Reese, and the chief, for all the good work that went into the report tonight. Thank you.
You have a pro tip.
Thank you. Well, first of all, thanks to everybody that attended for this very long meeting tonight. Some of you spoke at the beginning, and some of you spoke at the end. And we've still got over 40 people that are still here. And obviously, this is an important issue. It's an important issue to everybody that attended. It's an important issue to everybody that is, that is on staff and city council, and that includes the police. I don't think that any of us that listened to the comments tonight, and that's been listening to the comments over the last couple of weeks, don't internalize some of it and ask ourselves, what could we do better? What can we do better? And I do myself. We're, we're human, we're all human, and none of us are perfect. And I certainly am not perfect. And, and I also strive to do the best that I can and represent the best that I can, and, and listen and act from there. And while I agree with many things that are said, I don't have to agree with everything to still be sympathetic and empathetic to the needs that are, that are in the community. And when I was at one of the protests, I spoke with a gentleman who often appears at the city council meetings, speaking on behalf of the Hall family, and I'm not, and I guess Bozaf, he wasn't here tonight. But we talked about how challenging it must be for him that he, at times, doesn't feel like a citizen in his own country, and how upsetting it must be for when he would walk down the street and people would cross the street away from him. I can't even imagine what that would be like in your own country, let alone in any country. And we talked about that. And, and those are things that I'm still learning to understand about, and, and do my best to understand as well. And again, what I see from Scott and Ton Hall, as they continue to advocate for their son, Miles Hall, and, and the tragedy that occurred just over a year ago, and how this is something that lives with them every single day and will live with them every single day. And they still have the wherewithal and the eloquence to come and speak with us and helping to make sure that this does not happen to anybody else in the future. And, and I can absolutely agree with that. I would want to see whatever we can do to ensure that that doesn't happen in the future. And so, back to the understanding about what we can do in mental health crises, and how we can work better as a community to ensure that mental health, when there are mental health episodes, that there are other avenues that can be done other than a 911 call, going to the police and showing up armed in a situation that may not necessarily call for that. And what can be done to ensure that we are able to have that other solution? And if it's not the county that's available 24/7, because we know there are emergencies that don't necessarily happen on the clock between 9:00 and 5:00 on a Monday through Friday, what can we do to help ensure that we have other means at that? And so I would go back to the question that I did ask last week, and I want to clarify a little bit. What would be different, should an incident like this happen, prior to potential engagement with officers? So what, what can we do to message that out to the community? And what can the community do to ensure that that it doesn't get to the point where officers show up in a situation where maybe there is another way to deal with that? And maybe there isn't an answer for that tonight, but I'm hoping that something like that can come up with all that we are presenting and learning, and hopefully collaborating on in the, in the near term. And with that, I would like to go back to something that I had mentioned last, last week, and City Manager Buckshai had mentioned tonight as well, forming a diversity and inclusivity committee. And that is something I think that is, we're past time for something like that. I think that would help, it would help be able to provide more information, more abilities to learn, and more ability to communicate and engage with the community in this extremely important endeavor to help make Walnut Creek the best place to be, and some place that everybody can feel safe in. And I, it hurts me to the very core to, to hear from our community that there are people that do not feel safe in our city. And that's something that I want to change. And so I would like to propose that we do have that diversity inclusivity committee. And Mayor, I know that's up to you to be able to, it's mayor's prerogative to nominate members for that, but I certainly would like to step up for that. And, and with that, I'll end my comments tonight. And again, thank staff, police, and, and all the members of the community that have joined us in this very long, but I believe, not just important, but historic, city council meeting.
Thank you. Everybody's had a chance to talk, and now I get to wrap it up. First of all, anybody that really knows me knows that I care very much about being respectful and supportive. And I feel pain when other people feel pain. It's hard to do it when you're running a meeting and trying to, to support everything that's going on and not make mistakes. And, and so maybe I wasn't quite as soft as I really am. And I apologize for that. I feel pain. The picture of the bruise made my heart stop. I've felt pain for the Hall family for all of the year that we've shared together. It's, it's hard to, it's hard to hear about this all of the time. Black lives do matter. Absolutely, black lives do matter. I want to see more diversity in Walnut Creek. I support getting some kind of committee going. And Kevin, I promise you that I will nominate you, and we'll find one other person to get this committee going so that we can encourage more diversity in our city. I admire the passion of the people who protested. I protested in my youth. However, what I really am concerned about is change takes more than just protesting. It takes hard work. It takes, I'm not hiding behind this word at all, patience. It takes listening of the other side. It takes time to find ways to make people's minds change, which doesn't happen overnight. And so I'm concerned that
And so I'm concerned that as this is going on, that those people who are revved up are going to run themselves out of energy and that they won't be here. And that what's happened over my lifetime, from Watts to Rodney King to, oh gosh, I don't know how many other really bad things, where everybody gets all real excited and wants to do change. And then the change never happens because they go back to their lives and they forget that they've made this promise. So thank you for your, thank you for your passion now. Please, please, please keep it up. The other thing I wanted to suggest is that we do have a public safety committee. And I am looking forward to that committee re-engaging and talking with the chief and other sources of information about expanding our public safety in unique ways and finding better ways to deal with it. Walnut Creek has not ever had a series of events like has happened this year or even, quite frankly, this last few weeks. I appreciate everybody's efforts. I appreciate everybody being open. I appreciate that we're going to go through and come out on the other side absolutely a better, stronger, more unified community than we have been in this up to now. And we've got a really good record up to now. So it's a high standard to meet. That being said, it is really tired. I'm losing my voice. I'm hopeful that everybody got something out of this meeting. I sure did. And we have one more item on the agenda that I still have to deal with. May I suggest that at 2:08, the correct thing to do is to continue that item for another night. And we will arrange and announce when that continuation will be as soon as possible. Other than that, I'm going to
Mayor? I just wanted to make one comment quickly that I would be happy to serve on the diversity committee along with the Mayor Pro Tem, unless there are other members that are
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. It's nice of you to volunteer. City Attorney, I forget what the correct language is when we're continuing it. So we're journeying our regular
Yeah, Madam Mayor, for this meeting, the council does have another meeting in June. As the council is aware, we're still dealing with the budget issues. And so we have sufficient time to add item 5B to that next council meeting that we have in June. So it would just be at the meeting that gets scheduled to deal with budget issues at the end of this month.
Okay. All right, so I interpret that as this meeting is now adjourned. And we thank you all for your attendance and your patience. Good night.